For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Sorry, I'll get back to you.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting, July 15, 2013. Roll please.
Eiler?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noah?
Here.
Sexton?
Walagora?
Here.
I'll point out that Sexton is on an absence. You've made us well aware of in advance. I will stand for the pledge.
(Crosstalk). (Crosstalk).
Okay, if everybody had an opportunity to read the regular minutes, or the, I'm sorry, the minutes of regular session, July 1, 2013, and closed session, July 1, 2013. No modifications? Any modifications to the agenda this evening?
I have one, Your Honor. I'd like to add, under 10 report of officers, item D, report on the status of repairs to Ripley Boulevard at the Alpena Bank between two numbered streets, 4th and 15th.
And the engineer is okay with that?
Yes. He will prepare.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We have to move on then. I make a motion.
Second. Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Eiler?
Yes.
And citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address their concerns. That is the only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. If you come, please state your name and address for our records. And being, if there aren't any citizens here this evening, it's just given the opportunity for the press, I suppose, to come up if they'd like. There are no announcements this evening. On the consent agenda, bills to be allowed at the amount of $687,351.30. B is one city manager appointment to the Housing Commission for a five-year term expiring 7/15/2018, as Mark Straley. C is the budget amendments for projects to be carried over into fiscal year 2013-14. Major streets is $42,000. Water recycling plant is $70,000. Sewer collection system is $343,400. Water distribution is $243,000. Parks and recreation is $15,000. I make motion we approve that consent agenda. Is that it?
Second.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Eiler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, I have no proclamations this evening. We're not scheduled to have a public hearing. So we have report of officers, treasurer's financial report, July 1, 2012, to June 30, 2013.
As you know, this first financial is just the preliminary for our year end. We have accruals and auditor adjustments still to come. Our overall revenue was at 97 percent, so it's a little bit under where we had hoped. And our expenses, though, are under, also, and that's very good, at about 4.82 percent. When we amended the budget for this year, we figured we'd still need about $360,000 out of fund balance. Right now, it looks like we'll only need $244,000, so we're a little bit ahead of that like we had hoped that we would be. So we're going to look at about 33 percent fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. We will not know that final amount until the auditors come. For example, these funds, these budget amendments, all those will affect final numbers. So there's lots more to do until we get our final numbers, but it looks like we're going to come in as good as we had hoped.
That's a receiving pile?
Yes, please.
I'm who we receive a files.
Walagora?
Aye.
Eiler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Thank you, Karen. Draft comprehensive plan update authorization to release for public comment.
The State Planning and Enabling Act requires that municipalities review and update as necessary its adopted comprehensive or master plan every five years. The city's current plan was completely rewritten and adopted in 2007. The Planning Commission began reviewing the plan in 2011 with the assistance of city staff and later with the assistance of Denise Klein of NIMCOG, as we contracted with them to actually format and put together the updated plan. The extensive time period was exacerbated by my 14-month duo, city manager and planning development director, which kind of brought some stages of that to a halt for a period of time. Included in the process was a citizen survey as well as numerous discussions during regularly scheduled commission meetings. The updates to the plan have now been completed, and the draft is ready to be released for a required 63-day public comment period per the state act. And you have, each of you, a copy, hard copy, of the updated draft of the city's comprehensive plan. Due to the size of the document, it was not sent out electronically. However, it will be available later, as I'll get into that, as far as the actual public comment period. The main updates were really, that are probably most significant for you to look at, are Chapter 8, which are the goals and objectives, and the, also includes the implementation strategies. All the updates are in either red or blue, and the only reason there's difference in color is that you read with the initial changes, and then there were further updates and additions, and those were in blue, the additional language after that. But combined, those would be the proposed changes. Also, there are changes to both the existing land use and the future land use map. Not, you know, real large, or a large number of them, but those changes were made to update the maps. Both Chapters 2 and 3, which would be demographics and housing and economic profile, were basically, are totally, if not rewritten, the information is all new. They were based on primarily 2000 census data, when it was done in 2007, with some updated resources, you know, from 2005 and that period. Now, they're based on the 2010 census plus updated resources that are out there since that, in the three years since that census. So they were completely rewritten. Also, in the third chapter on the economic profiles, a totally new section, which is based on the EVIP that the city's required to do in terms of its finances and its financial stability. There are many, several pages, beginning on page 326, and then going through the end of the chapter, where there's a variety of information on that, and that is all totally new. Obviously, that is something that will change on an annual basis. And most of all, if not all, that information is also included on our webpage each year as it's updated, in order to comply with the EVIP requirements from the state. But they're also, were put in here this particular time. The city is required to provide copies of the updated plan to both the Alpena County and the Alpena Township Planning Commissions by the first day of the comment period for their review and any comment they may have. Additionally, we'll have a copy at the library for people to look at. It will also be on our website, as well as the NIMCOG website. All comments received during the review period will be received by the commission and responded to during the required public hearing before the commission in October. During the comment period, council members are requested to go through the plan, and any comments they have may be submitted to either the Planning Commission Chair, Paul Saber, or myself, or for that matter, to the new city planner once he comes on board here, hopefully in the next two to three weeks. The anticipated timeline for the adoption of the updated plan is July 15 today, asking for the council to make a motion to authorize the release of the draft for public comment. And then that will begin on July 24 and run through September 24. That's the 63-day period mandated by the act. Then on October 8, the public hearing will be held before the City Planning Commission, and then they will vote on the plan. And then it will be presented, hopefully November 5, but either that or the second meeting, to council for their action. Once, as any comments come in, if there are any, they will be reviewed by both staff and the commission. They are required to respond to any comments. It doesn't mean they need to modify the plan. They could disagree with a comment and simply leave what they put in as is, but they do have to at least respond. So, once we get those back, they will be reviewed by staff and then also provided to the commission at that time. So, basically, at this point in time, what I'm asking is for the council to authorize the release of the document, and we will then put it on our webpage and distribute it to those that we have to on the 24th of July. I do want to thank the Planning Commission. They put a lot of work into this over a long period, as well as various staff members, and Denise Klein with NIMCOG. She did a yeoman's job of getting this together, getting all the new data and information in, and then taking everything everybody was saying, plus what came out of the surveys, and incorporating that into this document.
As a former member of the Plan Commission, my hat is off to these people. Grant writers in this town are going to celebrate this. It is a wonderful, wonderful document. I was so impressed with the new language for the BDA and so many other places that are just too numerous to mention, but this is a wonderful document. I think it's one of the best, one of the best ones we've ever had. And I'm proud of them, and I really thank the Plan Commission.
And I will thank you as well, because you were there for a big part of it, maybe for at least the first half of it.
It wasn't this finalized. It's just absolutely sleek. I'm so proud of it. I think I'll make a motion that we release this document to the citizens, and is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, for public, yeah.
For public viewing.
I'll second that.
All right, excellent. I can't wait to read it. You got me all going now.
It's really, yes.
Let's read it.
Eiler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Thank you, Greg, and Susan, and certainly the Planning Commission. Under bids this evening, we have, one, thermal imaging camera in the fire department. Chief Horvish.
Good evening. I roll members of council, I'm Bill Horvus, your fire chief, and I'd like to give you an update on our thermal imaging project, finally coming to fruition. As you may remember, some time ago, we were awarded a grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for the purchase of a state-of-the-art thermal imaging camera. We have some very old equipment that was very graciously donated to us by the Zonta Club nearly 20 years ago. You can imagine the technological differences, and at this point, it's just not serviceable anymore. We can't get batteries for it, we can't get it fixed. But the new, the new technology has really brought some interesting things along with it, and we're very thankful to the Zantas for their support through the years. It's served us very well, and now it's time to move on to newer equipment. We've put together a committee comprised of Lieutenant Brian Caldwell and firefighter paramedics Jim Stacklowitz, Kevin Osborne, and Mike Sanders, who did an awful lot of work in determining exactly what was the right equipment for what our needs are, within the constraints of the funding for the grant, but also make sure you get the right stuff the first time, so don't make any mistakes. And they really did a lot of research. I'm very proud of them, great, great bunch of guys. They even did some side-by-side comparison in live-fire training in Long Rapids Township. They burned a house for training over the winter time, and several of our guys went out and actually looked at each of the different models and figured out what the best thing was for our needs. Bid packages were sent out then. They developed bid specs according to what they found in their research, and bid packages were sent out and were opened in April by Karen and I. Two responses were received, one from Westshore Fire of Allendale, which explained that the equipment that they offer doesn't meet our specifications, but they appreciated the opportunity to bid. The other bid was from Douglas Safety Systems of Sanford, Michigan, who bid two different models, one for $12,002 and one for $9,200. $9,200 is more in line with the grant that we had, so that's where we were looking. Both of their models do meet our specifications. There are two local fire equipment dealers, Alpena Fire Equipment and Great Lakes Safety, that we do business with in other areas, but neither sells thermal imaging cameras, so neither bid. But I did want to note that we approached both of them, and they weren't able to provide that particular product. The Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program funds 95 percent of the purchase for communities of our size, bringing the maximum federal contribution to 85/50. The balance between the federally funded portion and the lowest bid price is $650, which slightly exceeds our mandatory 5 percent local match. Fortunately, we recently received $633 in donations from Neiman's Family Market and Griffin Beverages, and we're very appreciative to them for their support. Neiman's Market put together a fundraiser in cooperation with their bread vendor, portion of bread sales for a time period, and half of the proceeds went to the Alpena Township Fire Department and half to the Alpena City Fire Department. And that's the majority of our donations that we're putting towards this thermal imager. Griffin Beverage is an Alpena company that distributes a number of different beverages, pop and beer and so forth, and they also had a gift back to the community program and made a donation recently. And then since you received my memo, and late breaking news, just today, we received another donation in the amount of $17, which means that we'll be able to purchase this equipment with no city money at all. And that certainly feels good to deal with something like that. The citizens will get all of the benefit, but bear none of the cost. And so that's a wonderful thing. Thermal imaging literally saves lives and property by enabling firefighters to see through smoke, to locate victims, and to locate hidden fire within walls and ceilings. By using thermal imaging, we don't have to manually open the walls in all those different spots to see if there's fire there. We can see before doing the damage, which is terribly helpful, not only to assure that there isn't a hot spot, but also to reduce damage caused by the firefighting operation. I would ask then that council award the bid for the purchase of a thermal imaging camera to the lowest bidder, Douglas Safety Systems, in the amount of $9,200.
Excellent work, Chief. Just, you know, you read the memo when you consider having to spend that amount of money, which isn't, which is relatively insignificant, when you talk about what it is that it's going to be able to do for you guys, but you turn around and end up telling us that it was, at one time, $17, and then now at $0.
Very personal of that, absolutely.
That's fantastic, for sure. I don't think we have any trouble with that motion, but if anybody has discussion, please do so.
I move that we award the bid for the thermal imaging equipment to Douglas Safety Systems of Sanford, Michigan, in the amount of $9,200.
And I'd probably second.
Nielsen?
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes. Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Eiler?
Thanks.
Okay, and then we have our addition, which is repairs of Ripley Street. Rich?
Thank you.
Actually, we've got things finalized. We've built the sanitary sewer permitting agency, and we've worked out with the water permitting agency. As it turns out, we are not going to replace the water main across there as we originally planned on. We did some further investigation, and they had determined that wasn't warranted at this time. We do have the permits in place to do the sewer work across there. Mainholes were actually ordered today. We've got a rush order. Typically, it's five to seven days for delivery of the mainholes. If we can push it up and get the work started, if I can get it started and get it done by a week from Friday, I'm going to push for it. If I can't get it done in that timeframe, I'm going to hold it till after the rally, the Brown Trump Festival, and all those, and we'll do it immediately following that. We've got a change order, the work involved out there, and most of it is the pavement, the fact that we've got to pull the paving off that entire intersection. We're looking at about $26,000 bill to do that. We've had discussions with our Lake Street contractor, and our intention is to do a contract amendment, excuse me, to that contract. He's agreed to pull off that job if we get the materials in here, go over, do that. We're going to make arrangements with the paving contractor to make sure he can come in right behind and get it done ASAP. But this should, this is something that we planned on doing in early June. Priorities, we just did not get to it with our permitting agencies, so, but it is in the works, and I'm really hoping that by the end of next week, I can have it repaired, providing, the other thing I'm going to look at is the weather, because if the weather is not conducive to paving towards the end of the week, then we'll hold off too, because I don't want a gravel patch out there with that much traffic and over the, so on the busiest weekends we have going.
Right, yeah, that's good planning. And I would, I would assume you probably just freaked out a bunch of residents on the north side, saying that they would pull off, but if they pull off that job, I'm assuming they'll leave it in a condition where they can use it readily. I haven't been over there lately, but just bringing up the pavement's probably already in better condition than it was.
They're actually, I'm hoping, they should be darn close to finishing the water main over there. And typically, once they do that, they can drop back, put the sewer, but there is a time lag while we do back tea testing and all the sampling when they, sometimes there's not a lot of work that goes on. So, and it would be like a two-day job to pull them off, take them over, do that repair in Ripley, and then get them back over there. So it would be a short, short, very short time that we would pull them off.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions, Sam or Karen?
No, thank you.
And that intersection, that's, what is that, Fifth? Fifth and Ripley?
Fifth and Ripley. Okay.
All right, no communications. No unfinished business? There is unfinished business. Flipped over my thing. Sorry. Why you were staying there, but now I know. Sewer utility camera supplemental information. So we started that last.
Pursuant to some of the questions raised by city council members at the last city council meeting, I requested that Mike Lewinsky, United Waters Utility Manager, provide additional information on the proposed sewer utility camera purchase. Mike has provided the attached memorandum to further delineate benefits of the additional equipment proposed to be purchased in conjunction with both the push camera and the tractor camera, which were included in the original request for bids. If council members have additional questions, Mike is here to answer those questions. And when I, when Mike provided that, I went back through it and I read, and I, there was a couple items there that I questioned. The DVRs, the two DVRs that we have that are included there are fairly expensive, about $1,300 a piece. So I went over and I talked with Steve Schultz, who's basically our IT person here in the city, and I said, "Okay, is this online? Is this on the web?" He said, "You know, just a plain Jane DVR that we plug into the wall, sit on a shelf, et cetera, probably about $500 to $600." I said, "You know, this one is obviously designed for inclement weather, it's to be out, waterproof, all that. Plus, you've also got the special connections, the special reading capabilities in that DVR." So, based on those, we feel that it's probably, you know, a pretty decent price for those two. Those were the two things that really, I guess, jumped out at me as far as questioning it, so we did investigate those. Mike, if you have any more questions, Mike is here to answer those.
I guess I'm not, I have a question, but I'm not sure that my question is for Mike, but maybe even more for Karen and Greg. If this works out, and we can purchase this piece of equipment and the supporting equipment, is this something that we could share with the surrounding communities and perhaps regain EVIP dollars from the state? Is this another way? Could this be another way?
We've done that. And if the situation arises and they request it, we do have a billing rate that we bill them, and basically, it covers wear and tear, maintenance on the equipment. It was not rated, so I want to say it was like $75 an hour. It's $120 right now. Okay, $120 an hour right now to use the sewer camera. And that, that's almost $60,000, and that's why the price is so high. But we do make it available to outside agencies if they need to, or, you know, in the event that the fire department needed or something, it is available and available for very usual.
And is it reversible with EVIP dollars? Could we qualify for more?
It's a sure, I mean, it's sharing activity. We already listed.
Well, I think that EVIP, that was, we get it's the maximum we can get. It's just, we have to show that, at least for that one-third, which is what, 110 or so forth.
It's not how many projects, it's just that you are consulting.
That you do.
Right.
Okay, but it is a support, it could be a supporting factor. I mean, if fire equipment is.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Yes. I think it could be in our best interest, wouldn't it?
You know, and what was it, two weeks ago now, I asked for the decision to be tabled just because I wanted to get a deeper understanding of exactly what it was used for, how often we used it, you know, what the capabilities of the camera were, and what advantages it would bring to the men that provide, you know, the service to our customers, and how much money it has actually saved from sewer inspections and so on, on pipes that we're unaware or unsure of. So, following all that, I appreciate all the information that Mike has provided, answering the questions even last week, and having time to think about it as well, so.
Okay, yeah, it was great information. Yeah, I had some follow-up as well, so it worked out well. Any other questions for Rich or Mike on that?
Do you want to approve that?
You want to take action?
Yes, we need action. Either the base bid or the base bid plus whatever accessory equipment you wish to offer.
Yeah, I don't want to, I mean, personally, I guess I wouldn't want to, I mean, they've done a lot of study, and they've gotten a deal on what they have in the package. I, personally, I don't want to go back and make a motion that we just take the base bid and then all the extras that the company was going to put in didn't seem incredibly significant, if it's going to help the whole system and not have a half a package. So, I would, I'd support the entire package rather than just the base bid. And they can be, it can be just one, right?
Yeah, we need the base bid plus the accessories.
But feel free to, if you, you know, I don't want to influence you not to, but that's what I would support, the whole thing.
It makes the most sense. Again, have a redo, I don't think.
Are you making that motion then? I'll make it. That we approve, along with the additional equipment.
Second.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Eiler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you, Rich. And we have new business. Amendment to the Clearwell Repair Contract between the City of Alpena and NAGUN.
Last year, the city contracted with NAGUN also to come in and take to perform sealing and waterproofing work on the 1975 section of the Clearwell at the Water Production Plant. And as, as we got into this, got it exposed, we identified that the roof did have a crack in it that needed to be sealed up, but we got that sealed up. We also had them working on the inside of the tank to get that sealed up, basically to seal the cracks, but then to also put a waterproofing agent on the wall, which would seal the walls, keep water exfiltrated from the tank. Once it's full, the pressure in the tank, the water flows out, does not flow back into the tank, except when we take it down for service or repairs or cleaning, like we have done in the past. The contractor came in, they did perform the sealing of the top of the tank. Also during that process, our MD EQ water folks came in and decided that we should have new tank covers and hatches and vents on it. So we did contract with NAGUN to make those modifications and get those in as well. And then they worked on the inside of the tank for well over two months. And then they worked on the inside of the tank for well over two months. In the past, the, as they put it, the most that they'd ever used injection sealing product in any tank was about 35 gallons. They had well over 70 gallons into this tank and were not sealing the cracks. Basically, what was happening is that they would, you know, the floor would be dry over here, they would seal up a crack. That area that was dry would now have a hairline crack in it with water seeping out of it. So then they'd have to go back and seal that. They were chasing it basically all over. The bottom line was that they could not, they could not complete the task. We were getting into November and we, we had to get the tank back into service, and so we basically, we pulled them out of there and said, okay, that's as far as we wanna try to go. We also asked them to put a proposal together to come in and seal the 1922 section. Basically, the, the 1922 section is surrounded on two sides by the 1935. There's a half a million gallons of storage in the 1922 section, and then an L-shaped tank around two sides of that that were formed in 1935 and poured. What we feel is happening is that the same condition exists in the 1935 tank, or, excuse me, the 1922 tank, has existed out in the other one. So the water, because we had to keep that, that one tank full, the water pressure from there was flowing out, and that sits, that whole tank system, Clearwell sits so close to the rock that that water was getting down there and forced to flow along that rock and seeking the most, the easiest way to, to relieve itself, which was through the cracks in the floor of the, of the other tank. We tried a number of different techniques. We treasured around the outside, put in some, some points to try to dry that up and pull the water out. But again, the problem is that with that rock in there and it's so irregular, it doesn't flow out. If it was nice, flat, or shaped so it would drain off, we could've got the water to the outside edges, but it couldn't. These are all summations. I mean, nobody has the x-ray vision to see what is actually going on down there. But this is, this is our best estimate of what the problem is. What we'd like to do, and what we're proposing, and we've worked with Natagon, to develop a proposal to fit, to go back in and seal the older section of tank. They have provided a proposal, excuse me, of $154,950. Now that does include $30,000 for a temporary tank and plumbing. What they're proposing to do is to basically void both tanks, drink both tanks down at the same time, use a temporary tank out in the, sitting in the parking lot to pump into a drawout of, to put out into the distribution system, and that would give them an opportunity to get in and seal both tanks up, get the floors sealed up in, in both tanks, floors and walls. We're not really excited, we're not quite sure that putting a temporary tank out in the parking lot is going to work for us. I mean, the Water Department Superintendent and Mike both have reservations about, you know, if that's gonna work for us and provide us reliable, adequate water service. I have calls into, into Natagon. One thing we may try and do is just drain down the, the 1922 section and fill up the 1935, keep that full. We've, we've done a lot of work, we've sealed up a lot of the cracks. We think we may have slowed it down enough now that we can, we can seal up the other section. But neither case, this is something that we need to do, we need to pursue. I had discussions with the MD EQ Water Division folks. They recognize that the city is proceeding forward to correct this. This is a deficiency in the tank, because the water does flow out of it. It's, it's good potable water that we are losing out through these cracks in the tank. And they recognize that we are making an effort to correct this. They also recognize that, that we are also looking long-term. We know that in the near future, and I'm saying, when I say near, 10, 10-plus years, that we are gonna have to put a new tank down there. When we do that, that's something that conservatively, you're looking at 70 to 75 cents per gallon for a concrete tank storage. So we're looking at, you know, three-quarters of a million dollars just to pour the tank. Then you have the plumbing, you have the electronics, all the controls, et cetera, to have to go in there. So we're probably in the million, million and quarter, million and a half or more range for that. That's something we're gonna have to bond for. That's something we're not gonna be able to afford. We would have to bond for that and take, take on the debt. But we're looking at that for probably about 10 years out or more. The repairs that we are trying to accomplish with this will buy us that 10 years. And yeah, it's a lot of money. It's, you know, we've spent about probably $175,000 on the first tank, we'll have about $150 into this one. So we're in the two and a quarter range, but it's like anything else. Those are, I mean, there was no way we were gonna make the jump to a million and a half dollars right now in our current financial situation to be able to undertake this tank. These are the steps we had to do to buy the time to, to be at a point where, you know, 10, 12 years from now, then we can't, we'll be in a situation where we can't hopefully bond to that tank. And again, if that tank isn't used, a temporary tank out there isn't used, that's not something that we would incur a cost for. Natagon, I've, I've talked to them on several occasions, and they said they are very confident that we can get those tanks sealed up, get them waterproofed where they will be 100% sealed. We, we just hope that we can do it by doing it one tank at a time, and that's what we're gonna start and try first. It's, it's my recommendation that we do proceed forward, do a contract modification to add the additional $154,950 to the contract, because it is still an open contract for them for the repairs to the 1922 section of Clearwell.
I get it when you bring that.
Well, we, this is something we knew was gonna, was gonna follow up the first tank. This, I guess, it's a contract modification, but we knew that we were gonna have to follow it up. We just anticipated that the first tank, that we would be able to get the first tank sealed completely and then come back with the second one. But obviously, that was not the case once we got into, into it. And the tank didn't look that bad when we, when we had it down for service.
I don't, I'm just, I guess I'm just a little, a little bit more than a little apprehensive about the whole thing. Mandy, because I, quite honestly, I think I would rather you came with a plan to, to bond three-quarters of a million dollars to get it fixed, so we wouldn't ever have to discuss it again or to, to put in the new one. I'll be waiting for that day, whether I'm here or not, but, because I understand, but, because it just seems like 1922 and 1935, and we're trying to fix them. And I was here, so I understand, you know, how that developed and what they found once they went in there. And on my elementary level, I understand, they went into a tank and the tank next door was, still had water in it, so it was leaking in while they were trying to fix that tank. And so now the proposal is to go into that other tank and try and fix it, when realistically there's water in the other tank that may actually flow into that tank, and I'm not convinced that they won't find that same problem in the older tank than they had in the newer tank.
They may, they may have some of that, but not to the extent, because they have probably 70 to 75% of the floor and the cracks sealed up in, in the tank they started in. So you're not gonna have anywhere near the leakage out of that one like you, like you have out of the 1922 one, as far as the, under the floor and into that tank. I mean, if council, I mean, if council so directs, I mean, directs us to pursue a tank replacement, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna take us some time, because we'll have to work with, there's a number of steps we have to go through. One, we, that's something we would have to contract out for the design of a new water tank. So we'd have to have it designed, then go through the permitting process with the DEQ. Not gonna be a problem, because they would like to.
They're waiting.
They'd like to see us build a new tank. But then we have to go through the bonding process, and we would obviously, from our previous discussions, the rates we charge right now aren't even covering our ONM and debt costs. So there would have to be some type of a rate increase associated with that additional debt that we incur. And we could certainly, if that's something council's interested in, as far as the cost associated with that, Karen can work with our bonding council and get the numbers to do that. This is, this is an interim step, if we wanna go that way to buy us 10 years. If we want, don't wanna spend the money to buy that interim step, you know, we could pursue the full tank replacement.
And I could be convinced otherwise. I mean, you're the professional, quite honestly. I just wanna be really, I just wanna be really careful about the whole thing, because once, we've already, like you said, we've already spent a significant amount of money trying to repair the 35 tank, and by the time we're done, let's just say that everything you've proposed here works, we're talking about a quarter million dollars that we've put into it for, for 10 years. And with this, and correct me if I'm wrong, but let's just say that this goes well, and you end up having to use the, the temporary tank. So now you have both of the tanks that they need to work on are empty, and you have a temporary tank, so they can go in and they can work. Does this cost of 154,950 cover the repairs of them going back into the 1935 tank and repairing it as well?
Yes.
So we could walk away and the whole thing could be completely fixed at 100, at an additional 154,950.
Basically, what they did is in their proposed proposals, they gave us a floor coating credit of $21,675 for the areas within the first tank that they could not complete. They, they, that was a, a credit for the materials and the labor associated with coating that portion of the floor. So they have provided a credit for that. If, like I said, the 154,950 would cover us as far as getting everything completed. If, like I said, if that's, right now, right now, because of where we are at with the rate study, with our negotiations with Alpena Township, which will be start, which will be beginning this week, we're kinda in turmoil as far as our rates, and we've, we've just been sitting on our rates as far as where they're at. No significant increases. If, if we do elect to go forward, one, we don't, A, we don't have the money budget for the design portion of it, which would be the first step. We would have to either go into fund balance if there is any left, or delay or cancel some other project to be able to fund that. That's probably a year, year and a half out anyway.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm okay with that. When I said that I'd rather you were doing that, I would just quite honestly rather you were doing that. I guess I wasn't specifically stating that I wanted to go in that immediate direction.
Those are options.
Unless it was, you know, unless Greg and you proposed that it was, but obviously you're proposing to fix this, so you have more time to do that the proper way, and I'm okay with that.
I think what it comes down to is, you know, we're already looking at, even though we're, we're looking at ways to reduce the impact, it's still gonna be for us to cover our operation maintenance, our debt, and to have a reasonable amount of capital each year, there's going to be a fairly significant increase in water and sewer rates. And then, of course, we also have to handle the next negotiations with the township. To then throw on their additional long-term debt, because we've got another, you know, we got a million and a quarter, million and a half, million and three-quarter for, for the tank, for a new tank, right at this point in time, is probably getting to where we're getting over that tipping edge of what is really feasible now. Whereas if we spend 154, I don't wanna, I guess I will make the correction, just so everybody understands, is we've spent 175, I believe, so we're basically, we're at three and a quarter, not at two and a quarter, that we will have spent.
May I ask?
Yeah, so it is, it is that. But still, that's a fourth to a fifth of probably what a new tank, by the time we go from design right on through to construction's gonna cost. I just don't think we can bear that right now. And if we can give ourselves 10 years or a little more, that, I think, will make it much more palatable and workable for us as a, as a community. Of course, you know, things can go either very well or very bad, you don't know, but I think, looking at everything, it makes more sense to do this interim of gaining ourselves this extra time of 10 years or so, and then incorporating that. Because the other big project that was mentioned in the study that was not included in our CIP is if we do need to extend the intake. And so it was that and a Clearwell. And those are gonna, if we do either one of those, it is, it is gonna require bonding, you know, unless we just don't do any capital for some, you know, two, three, four years at all, and we cannot afford to do that, to accumulate the money, we're gonna have to bond. And I think we need to take this in steps in order to make it work for the community.
Yeah, I get that. And I don't wanna be the one that proposed that today, so. Can we get a better feeling of whether we, whether we know that a temporary storage tank theory will work?
I, I, listen, I actually had a call, I had some calls into my rep with Natagon. He was out of the office. I was out of the office into last week, and then he was out of the office prior to that. So we did not get a chance to catch up. But that's gonna be the first discussions that Mike, Mike Lewinsky and I and the plant superintendent have with him. Let's try it and see what happens if we can drain that one tank down and, and facilitate repairs without the temporary tank. And we'll be able to tell that, I think, pretty quickly.
Okay. Cause I just, I'd be more comfortable, I guess, if you knew that, that, that the alternative plan would work. It'd make me really comfortable about not really knowing for sure whether a tank in the parking lot would work or not.
Well, I mean, we have, we have very, we have very strong concerns over, and it's not, I mean, it'll work, and it's done, it's done all the time. The, you know, you're not gonna put a million gallon tank out there, you're not gonna put a half a million gallon tank out there, you're probably gonna have maybe 100,000 gallon tank, which means you don't have that reserve capacity. Right now, we have, we have about some million gallons hanging up in the air in the storage tanks for, to, to support that. You know, you have a fire, you have an event, we have that much water up there. Plus, we have a million, you know, a million gallons roughly at the water plant that we could pump out into the system. Now, if you're in the situation where that, you don't have that million gallons at the water plant, you've got some million gallons hanging up in the air in those two water towers, those, and then as fast as we can produce and put it back into, into that smaller tank, this is as, as fast as we can pump it out into the system. Those are concerns that we have. And just the logistics, they're gonna have to go to a 24-hour day operation.
Capacity right now, we're only at two-thirds of what our actual production capacity is. We could go to a midnight shift.
Right.
And that gains us a little bit of extra production over the course of the night. Generally, we fill tanks up at night and then go home, shut down the filtration part. So we have that extra capability that we can utilize.
To make water as it's being.
We can make, make water throughout the course of the night. Of course, that costs us more money, so, depending on how long that would have to go on.
Right. So you'd be able to figure, I mean, you could balance whether it's gonna offset the cost of a temporary tank or throw it in a midnight shift for.
We, we would still have to have the temporary tank.
Maybe, well, yeah.
To store the water that we're producing.
Okay.
And obviously, if we have a major fire event, that's the thing that you have to be most concerned about. We're going to do this in a time of year where our demand is low, so we should be able to keep up with just normal demand, but if we have a fire event, those are the things that you worry about. We encounter that when we clean tank, though. If we take an elevated storage tank down, we've lost that extra fire flow capacity. So, you know, we do do it, and you do have to weigh the, the dangers and try to plan ahead for those, those events.
I love it.
We definitely have concerns about having just the.
We definitely have concerns about having just the temporary tank. There, I'd be much more comfortable with the situation where we try to use the existing tank and repair the older tank, 1922 tank. That'd be our preference, just try that first. And then if that doesn't work, then we go to option two.
Do you have a timeline for all of the repairs?
Well, we, the original, last year, we started them, I think, right after, right mid-September is when they started them. They planned on being out by mid-November, about two months. They were actually, like I said, I think I said before, I said November, they were into December, and they were still working on it. So we would anticipate that this would, this is basically a square tank. The other one was L-shaped, had a lot more wall space than this one does. So we should be able to get this one done in that six-to-eight week timeframe. But I, as far as the starting date, no, I have not finalized that, you know, on that. The other thing that we noticed when we took the tank down was, that's the newer section, the concrete, the quality of the pores weren't as good as the older tank. There were a lot of areas where you could tell that they didn't vibrate properly. And, you know, that may be some of the problems that we had with the bottom of the newer tank, the 1935 tank.
Right.
Say newer 1935. Yeah. The existing tank actually had, was in better condition as far as the concrete outwardly.
So they're gonna repair the newer, the older tank, which is in better condition?
Well, and then we were theorizing that that water from that tank, the bottom, it was leaking into the other tank. The tanks are actually, they were poured on bedrock.
Right.
And it was actually like, both tanks were sitting in a bowl, so any water that comes out of them, it's gonna go the path of least resistance through the cracks in the other one. We may encounter the same thing. You just don't know until you try.
Now, on the emergency thing, because you were talking about fires, and we have, the city has two water tanks, township has more water tanks, is there an availability to open something backwards and use there?
There is.
Okay, I assume so.
We've done, we've done that in the past. When they've had a tank down, or we've had a tank down, we've worked with them to open up bypass valves so that we can handle it. The downside is, it changes the flow direction in the system, and it does, you do have some water quality complaints from that.
Yeah, well, if there's a fire, then we're too concerned about that.
If there's a fire and there's a high flow, you're gonna have some of those complaints anyway, because, you know, the velocity of the water is what scours off the accumulation and rust inside of it.
There you go, I was kind of yapping alone. I don't know if you guys have any...
Good concern.
I guess if I was to make a suggestion, the thought about 154,950, which does include a temporary tank.
Rich, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I have a question about the itemized bill from NACGON.
Yes.
It's divided into three sections, labor, materials, and expenses. Under expenses, there are six entries for union benefits, which total over $11,000. There are several for per diems, which totaled another $4,200. And there's several under payroll tax and insurance for $3,800. So over $19,000 of that $48,000 is union benefits, essentially meals, and payroll tax. I don't run across that commonly in business, that, you know, there's labor and materials, and that's what you pay most people. Is this, is this common in this type of work? Should we be paying for people's...
Well, I mean, this was, this was their cost. Basically, this was their additional cost of time invested up here. I mean, their people were up here, staying in motels, staying in, so this is how they documented their additional time and expenses.
The 154, whatever, had that built in.
Yes.
And this is, they're just spelling.
This was additional effort that they put in. And those were, I mean, and I, believe you, I flipped it over, I said, you know, okay, we get union benefits three, four times. But it's every pay period that they issued, that's how they tracked it. It was per pay period of what they paid in payrolls, payroll taxes, insurances, per diems, and then those union benefits.
It's more than the labor and materials, which is shocking. Thanks for explaining that. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Nope, not hard.
Thanks. Pardon? LOL?
LOL?
I don't know, but it's almost $900.
Well, it's twice. It's LOL and it's...
2600 for LOLs.
Yeah. What is LOL?
It comes before a storm.
When they slow down and...
No, I'm not, I'm sure it's a piece of equipment, but I can't document that right now.
Okay.
And it's, you know, it's right in there with the water blaster rental, with the compressor. And I think, if I rem, no, this is going from memory, don't quote me on this, but I think a LOL is a brand like a forklift, like a long-reach forklift that they may have had in there. But I, I don't know that product.
I'm actually relieved.
Move with Jerry?
We gotta do something.
He would like some action, or we can table on it.
I don't have the home go hockey game tonight.
I guess, the only thing I was gonna say before is, if you are looking to make a motion, they do have the additional cost of 154,950, which does include a temporary tank, they may or may not want to use. One option is to approve that amount, but not to exceed. And obviously, if we don't need those funds, because they're not necessarily using the temporary tank, then we would be able to save those funds. I wouldn't want us to put, maybe at least at this point, anything in any more than what is there, is there, that's the requirement. We're probably not gonna know whether, if you can correct me, Mike or Rich, we're not gonna know if doing a repair without a temporary tank and leaving the one in operation is gonna work until you actually try it. So it's just, we don't know. We know we could drain them both, put in a temporary, it has its own risks, but it can be done. The other is more of a trial and error. You try it, if it works fine, you proceed and finish it up, and you do save those funds. But if not, then we're gonna have to deal with it, with that temporary one.
Yeah, I don't, because of, because of what happened the last time they went into the tank to do repairs, I guess my only concern with that is that if we restrict the amount to their quoted 154,950, and they get in there and they start working, and they're in the middle of a meeting process, they're in the middle of hours, two weeks, and sometimes three weeks.
Yep.
If they incur extra costs while they're in there, and they wanna get it done, and we've put a stipulation of not to exceed, Rich won't have the latitude to add even $50 to any extra work that he needs to do. So, I mean, I get Greg's point, so maybe we can, maybe we can word it appropriately that it's not, that it not become anything significant, or, and I don't even know how we would do that. I wouldn't wanna tie his hands if it's, I mean, it could literally happen the day after we meet, and then it's gonna be three weeks if they catch us on our time, so, yeah, so I don't know. I'm gonna proceed with that.
Well, if we approve with the contract, that's what they're proposing based on it, if it does start coming up more, what's your normal procedure for handling it? Much like we did with the last one, how did you handle that?
Basically, I mean, we would do a contract modification, and if it exceeds, I think, $5,000, then we'd have to come back to council more than change order authorization. Less than $5,000, excuse me, less than $5,000 on any of our contracts, contract modifications can be approved by the city clerk, city manager, and myself.
Okay. Yeah, I figured so.
There's a checks and balances, so that don't go out.
So if we're gonna approve the modification, I guess let's just do it under your own circumstances.
And then we'll do our normal process. If it is going to exceed, then we'll come back.
Okay.
I move we approve $154,950 and start the process.
Oliver?
Hi.
Kaya?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
You can make that same motion again there.
Forgot.
It's a jury.
I move we adjourn.
One second.
You are watching all about Elpino.